It's six o'clock. At this time, I'll call a regular meeting for Perry City Council Office 7, 2018 to order. We have a form. Item three, the invocation and the pledge of allegiance to the flag. If you are able, please rise. This time, I'd like to call on Councilman Reverend Eugene to pray for our fellowship.
Father God, we are gathered in together in your precious name. I pray now, Father, that you give us wisdom as we go through the business of the city. When you do thank you with praise.
This time, I'll call on Councilman Reverend Eugene to pray for the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our form of recognitions and presentations. Item four A is a recognition of Ms. Sharon Kelly, ESG Operations, Ms. McMurray.
Everyone, I would like to take a moment here to acknowledge Ms. Sharon Kelly. At the most recent work conference at Savannah, Ms. Sharon Kelly was honored with the WMD Hatchfield Award, which is an award for outstanding professional and operations performance. This is an annual award given by water professionals every year. And Sharon has been honored to receive this award on behalf of the WTF and TAP. Sharon holds a Class One Water, Class One Waste Water, or Water Lab Analyst, Waste Water Lab Analyst, Collection Distribution MS4 for erosion and sediment control, and a utility performance license. She is a 25-year GAWP member, Laboratory Safety Committee's, and an active member of the WTF. We just want to take a moment and honor our employees here, Sharon with ESG, and thank you. And go forward, everyone.
Well, what I'd like to say is I really wasn't expecting this award. Very humbled by it. Been out here for 32 years, and the water and wastewater industry has been very humbling. I'm usually up here receiving teamwork awards, so it's a little different. I don't really like pat myself on the back, but I really appreciate it. Thank y'all for supporting me in this area.
Congratulations. You're doing fantastic.
Thanks, sir. I appreciate it. Thanks, Jen. Appreciate it.
For those of you who don't know me, my name is Kingsley Gibson, the landscape manager here at City Hall. And we've just installed an Accurite Weather Station at Public Works. And I have instructions for anyone who's interested in how to download and access the information, but this quick presentation is going to kind of go over how the system works and some of the features. For those of you who don't know, the Public Works facility is on 500 Ball Street, kind of at the intersection of Tucker Road. And where that red star is, kind of back behind this building right here, is exactly where we've installed it. And there's a little picture right there of what the little guy looks like. And so the receiver, which is on this picture here, this white thing, receives the information. It's solar-powered and then battery-powered backup that transmits the information to this little dashboard up here. And that's connected to the desktop, which then the internet connection transmits the information to online, myaccurite.com. It's accessed through the app. And it also sends our information to Weather Underground, which is a weather website. And so this is kind of an overview of what, when you open the app, the sort of information you'll get. It'll have a symbol for what the current weather condition is. It'll give you the temperature, the humidity, the chance of rainfall, rainfall inches, and the forecast. If you scroll to the right, it kind of starts to give you more detailed breakdown of these categories here: temperature, rainfall, humidity. And this is with an iPhone, so Android may look a little bit different, but in general, all the information is the same. You can also access charts that can be customized by category, whether you want to see rain, wind, the pressure, humidity, anything like that. And then you can change whether you want to see just a graph of today, the last 24 hours, last seven days, last year, or you can kind of customize it. See the different charts. And it's, I think it's a map of what the temperature feels like, so it shows the heat index and the actual temperature. And then myaccurite.com for people who don't have access to a smartphone or tablet or something like that. You can go online, log in. Here's the username and password, and it's all the same information. It's just displayed a little bit differently. The charts might be a little more read-able in this format. And then Weather Underground, we've registered our weather station. It reports this information to their website, which has been used nationally to update and create better information for resources as far as current weather data and forecasts. It also has a little more information on this website, which kind of shows you like soil temperature, astronomy, stuff like the phases, and like the pollen count, I think it also shows here. And it's a customized radar map right here that shows you our exact location. So our weather station's name is right up here at the top, KGA, Perry 11. And that's how you would search and find specific information from that location. And we're using this a lot of different ways around Public Works. Some of it is flower installations that we have throughout downtown. The pots and baskets are watered several times a week. And crews report early, and sometimes they need to be able to check how much rain they've gotten the night before to determine whether they need to come in or not, depending on if they've gotten a quarter of an inch or an inch and a half. And sometimes it's different, I know, from one side of here to the other. So this is as close as we can get. And then we can pull up charts as supervisors and be able to better predict future weather and kind of have a better gauge on soil, whether it's going to be a little wet or a little dry out, or lots of different things, including pavement and sign installations. Reporting our data to Weather Underground really helps the region and locally to provide better information. And hopefully, hopefully, this is something everyone can use and be interested in. If there's any questions, feel free to contact me or get information, type in on how to install it on your phone.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Item five, a petition for other updates. Anybody in this department who wishes to address the city on this ongoing matter? Thank you. Item six, for citizens put in book. Any citizens who wish to address council with this file?
Is this that regarding Cheshire, before I ask?
Ma'am?
Is this regarding apartments behind Cheshire?
No, this is...
Okay, I'm sorry. I just didn't know exactly where you were.
It's an open item. Any citizen or anyone can address council about any item at this time.
Will this be the only opportunity to do so?
No, sir. At the end of the, toward the end of the agenda, there will be general public items, and that's another open item that the general public may address council. Generally, these are the only two times during the meeting, unless we have a public hearing. There are public hearings, and there will be opportunities for people to speak for and against whatever particular item that we are addressing. Any citizens put in? Thank you. Item seven is a public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to provide any interested parties with an opportunity to express their views and concerns in accordance with those CGA Section 36-67A-3C. Item 7A, this is a petition for rezoning application number R-1807. Walter G. Simmons, Jr. requests the rezoning of property from R-3, multifamily residential district, to OC, office commercial district. The property is located at 1401 Swift Street, tax mountain number OP-02001000. Mr. Wood?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, as you mentioned, this is a request for rezoning. The property at 1401 Swift Street was granted a special exception some time ago, back in 2009 actually, to operate a private school for piano lessons. And that gig that used continues at that property currently. The applicant is proposing to change the zoning, I should say, the zoning is currently R3, which is the multifamily residential classification. It does have that special exception for this one additional use that's not typically allowed within that zoning district. The applicant is proposing to rezone this property to OC, which is an office commercial district, in order to operate his attorney's office there. In reviewing the criteria for establishing or considering a zoning change, the staff felt that the application did not meet those criteria. In looking at a rezoning provision, we believe the council should consider all applications or all uses that are allowed within that zoning district, unless you're going to place conditions on that, on that application. In looking at these uses, we felt that it was not appropriate to allow some of the uses that are currently allowed in OC. When you look at the, at the location, so it's located here on our Swift and Fourth Street. All of the properties in this area going down Swift Street and behind are zoned R3, the same as this property. And as you get closer to the intersection of Swift Street and Houston Lake Road, there is some commercial zoning in this area. There's also some OC zoning in this area that is acting as a buffer between the residential and the commercial at this point. Otherwise, all of the, all of the properties in the area are zoned R3. Again, we felt that it was inappropriate to introduce the potential for commercial zoning in this location in regards to the fact that the Swift Street area is a historic district. There have been a number of properties in that area that have sold recently, and property owners continue to invest in their property to improve that as a residential area. The planning commission did recommend denial of the application as well. I'll be happy to answer any questions, Mayor.
Would if the current owner sells the property? Was the special exception that was granted to it cease?
The special exception that was granted previously appears to be, appears to run with the land. There was no conditions limiting it to the current owner or anything like that. So it could continue to be operated as a use as well.
Any member of council have any questions? Mr. Wood or staff regarding the file? Thank you. At this time, is there anyone present who wishes to speak for this petition for rezoning application as described?
My name is Bo Simons. I've been a lawyer here for about 30 years, well, four 30 years. And I would like to, I'm asking to rezone the property because that's the only way I can, or it was told to me, that's the only way I can use the property as a law. If I could do it as a special exception or as a variance, I would certainly do that. When we had a hearing in front of the zoning commission, and people spoke, and the commission spoke, their concern was about the creep of commercial properties into an historic district. And they were concerned about the preservation of an historic district. If you want to preserve an historic district, I'm a guy that you want to see coming. I like historic property. I vacation with my wife in places like Boston, and Charleston, and Savannah, and New Orleans. And when I go to Beacon Hill, there's homes, and there's laws. You go to the historic district of Savannah, there's homes, and there's a law office. Same is true in Charleston. The same is true in the Garden District in New Orleans. It's true in the French Quarter. Those places are 300 or 400 years old. Considering my application, one of the things that Mr. Wood noted was that, and said a law office generally has a low impact on surrounding properties. Now, I'm a Special Assistant Attorney General for the State of Georgia. And what that means is I represent a state agency. And the agency that I represent is the Department of Human Services, and that's DEVAC. And that's a lot of what I do because it's grown, and that's kind of problematic, but the only thing I do in my office regarding DEVAC is paperwork. If I meet with DEVAC, I go to DEVAC, and of course, I go to court. A heavy day for me in the office might be five feet. That's a lot less intense use than music school, which I think has 100, I don't know, a lot of students. So there's a lot of traffic. I would not increase the signage or even ask to increase the signage. I would not change the look of the property. You would hardly know, really, that I was there. It said that I would upkeep, you know, keep up the property, and I would keep in mind that this is an historic area, and it doesn't need to be changed. You know, when this was denied, what they said was that my use was whether my use, whether the proposed rezoning will be a use that is suitable in view of the uses and development of adjacent and nearby property. You can stand in the front yard at 1401 Swift Street, and if you look that way, there is a place that fixes cars, a convenience store, and a liquor store that you can see. There is a halfway house across the street. There's a huge, beautiful church property just down to the right. If you keep going down to the right, there's a laundromat and a convenience store with gas station. I do not understand how my little law that would not change this property at all is not in keeping with nearby develop. It's less commercial than nearby development. You know, I, you're the government. I have a constitutional right to treat it similarly, to similarly situate people. And I just, you know, when we had the meeting in front of the zoning commissioners, there were people who said, "I don't want to look outside and see commercial. I don't want, I don't want business near me. I'm not going to build a convenience store." You know, this is R3. You could build an apartment complex there. It's not big enough, but you could build a golf course there, and that's, you know, in that zoning. Mr. Wood noted that their concern is that if you zone this, then there are other uses in that zoning that would be offensive. And he said, you know, "That's not true if you rezone it with restrictions." And I really don't care what restrictions you put on it. This building is a good deal for me. It would be a good place, have a law office. A law office is in keeping with an historic area, and I just don't understand why we can't do this, and I think.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Is there anyone else present who wishes to speak for this petition for rezoning?
I'm Laura Ennis, and I'm used to speaking in front of little people, so bear with me. I own the property right now, and I had a little bit of trouble with the planning commission meeting with things that were said because the people that were speaking against me, I only knew one family prior to moving my studio to Swift Street in 2009. So they kind of knew my story, but the other people that spoke have no idea why I'm even there. And it's a long story. I'm not going to get into it. Got it in some doors for me. But I was on Ball Street in a commercial property. That's where I started out in 2007, prior to it being a home-based business where I lived before that. Outgrew the home, moved to Ball Street. Was there about a year. Can't make the space bigger, but I added walls to make more rooms because we'd outboned at that point. And in 2009, I found out that a bar was going to be moving next door to me. And I had already had an experience, sorry, with a student, with a man that had been on drugs, coming in my studio when I'm teaching students until 8:30, 9:00 at night. And he came in, and he terrified the student to the point that I had to call 911 to get an escort by her leave because she wouldn't go out in the building. She was probably inside behind a corner. So I knew when that passed for the bar to go next door, and me being there that late, that it was not going to be ideal for him. And at that point, I started looking somewhere else and ended up on Swift Street. Some of the things that were said during the planning commission meeting was about it being a neighborhood. I have a problem with that term because I had been there for nine years, and one person has come and said anything to me on that street. I mean, I've had orange sign in my yard for almost two months, and nobody's come to ask me why. I live right now with 18 acres between me and my closest neighbor, and I know on a personal basis my six closest neighbors. And I know that if any of us had an orange sign in their yard, we'd be over there saying, "What's going on? Do you need help?" You know, because that's what neighbors do. They find out what's going on. They care about each other. And I don't feel that Swift Street has been a neighborhood for me. That's my opinion. When I did go to Swift Street in 2009, I went around the whole streets, knocked on every door. Some people weren't home when I came by. I did it there for a couple of days. And there was only one family of everyone that I talked to on a personal basis and said, "This is who I am. This is what I'm trying to do." I asked them to sign a petition to ask if they were okay with me running my business out of Swift Street without living there. And every person that I talked to signed that petition except for one family. I'm interested in selling the property, Mr. Simmons, because my business is out of the location that we're in now. Weak and blessed. To put a sales sign in front of the property would prevent future clients from inquiring about our services due to the appearance of us being closed or closing. Even if I tell my students that we're moving, I will still lose students because about half of them do not read my correspondence. The scariest time in my life was in 2014. We lived in a house off Tucker Road for 10 years, minus the six months that we were rezoning Swift Street. We lived on a quiet street with four houses, had 800 acres of woods behind us. Then the new family moved next door. There were nights that I feared a drug deal would go down, and my kids would end up victims. On many occasions, my husband had to confront them due to running around our house at all hours of the night, or fighting in the driveway. Then there was the day that the SWAT team arrived to arrest the man that had killed the officer in New York and was hiding out in their house. My point of saying all this is you can't control the move next to you. But I've known Mr. Simmons for 15 years, and I know that selling to him would be a good thing for the community. I don't know if putting my property on the market would end up in the same great situation. So neither one of us are trying to make it commercial and sell it and, you know, develop Swift Street. That's not what we're trying to do. We're fine, like you said, with any kind of restrictions you want to put on it as far as making this happen. That's, that's what we're asking.
Thank you, Ms. Ennis. Is there anyone else present who wishes to speak for this petition for rezoning? Thank you. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak against this petition for rezoning application number R-1807 as described?
I'd like to speak against.
Yes, ma'am. Your name and address, please.
I'm Black Elizabeth Baker. I live at 1306 Swift Street. I've lived there since 1994 with my husband Mike and our three boys. When we moved there, our sons were eight months, two and a half, and 11. So we've lived there for 23 years. Long time. We raised our children there. We've had neighbors come and go. We've seen a lot of changes on Swift Street. I think the first new material population was like 7,000 people or something. The reason we're opposed to the rezoning is because it's not a rezoning from like R1 to R3, but it's a rezoning to commercial. And while we trust Mr. Simmons, heck, I voted for him last time he ran for election. So I trust him that much. But trust him, love Laura, know we're all family. But businesses have a lifetime. People have a lifetime, and we're not looking just at our lifetime. My neighbors that we started off with on Swift Street are no longer there, or most of them. Some of them are. I think maybe one is still there. But while I might trust what he would do with the property, I don't know what the next person would do with the property. We feel that it would erode the edges of the historic neighborhood as it is, right there on the edge. When I stand in my front yard, I can look straight across and look straight into the front yard of 1401. We feel like it would erode the confidence that has built up in the neighborhood, with a lot of high confidence. Homes are selling quickly. A lot of young people are moving in to raise their families, just like we did back in 94. And there's even a new deal in the neighborhood. So, I mean, that's crazy exciting. Who would think that anybody would build there with us? When you go to a lot of historic areas, we do too, as craziness. You live in an old house, you go visit old places. What a lot of these old places are doing, I was just in Little Five Points in Atlanta, then up in Macon. There are a lot of historic neighborhoods that were once, I mean, a lot of historic places were once historic neighborhoods that have commercialized. They have nice little law offices. They have dress shops. A lot of cute point, point places who have pizza parlor and stuff like that. They are actually trying to draw back in families, to move back in. And the goals that they list are a better preservation of these historic assets. They found that commercialization and just having somebody in these structures was just not enough. And they're also doing it to create a, preserve the image of the area, to provide a holiness, a charm. I've watched a whole special on the Beltway in Atlanta where they're trying to get people to move back into those historic areas. So, but Perry has been very proactive. Instead of us trying to get people to move back into the area, we're trying to keep people in the area. And there's a whole lot of benefits. I won't be too long on those things, but the benefits are pretty obvious. When a home is, when a house is meant for people to live in it, you don't have to go through the struggle of making sure that it's, the fire hose is correct. You don't have to make sure there's adequate parking. You don't have to make sure that you outgrow it. Well, I mean, sometimes you do, but you can find another family that fits in there. And there's a distinct difference between the look of a house, no matter how careful you are. you are, of a house, a historic house with a business in it and a home, a historic home where people live there. When you ride by, you know the difference, whether it's a sign, a parking lot, lights on day and night, whatever it is. And when you're trying to have a charming image in your city, a historic neighborhood that people ride by can create just that image. And we really appreciate the support we've gotten so far and we're just asking for continued with that support. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against this petition as described? Thank you. Item 7B. It's a special exception application number S-1804. The applicant, Catherine and Alex Paget, request a special exception to allow a residential business. The property is located at 605 Woodland Drive. Tax map number is 0P01103500.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, this request is for a special exception to allow residential business for pet grooming. The location at 605 Woodland Drive has actually been used that way for a while. It recently came to our attention that the Pagets did not have proper approvals and so they had filed that request and gone through the process. In looking at the application, the applicant indicates that they, that they have clients that drop off and pick up their pets between 8:00 AM and 2:00 PM Mondays, Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, so four days a week. As I mentioned, they have been operating for quite a while. We have not received any complaints or concerns about them. I think it was actually a city employee who realized that they didn't have a business license. So that's how it came to our attention. At the planning commission hearing, there were no, no one stood for, no one stood in opposition, the applicants obviously were there to speak on their behalf. The planning commission and the staff both recommended approval of this request. There were four conditions that were recommended, and those are that the special exception be limited to a residential business conducted for pet grooming only, that the special exception be limited to the applicant Catherine and Alex Paget, and is not transferable, that the applicant shall comply with the provisions of this code regarding the operation of home occupations of residential businesses, as well as all happening with state, local state, federal laws and regulations, and also that they not display any signs of residential business on the property.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Is any member of council having any questions of Mr. Wood or staff regarding this item? At this time, is there anyone present who wishes to speak for the special exception application number S-1804 by the Pagets as described? Yes, ma'am.
I didn't know they were going to be here today. I didn't know anything about this. But she's our pet groomer. I recognize some other people in here.
Yeah, I didn't know you were behind me.
So, I mean, I would be in favor with the restrictions that have been listed. I don't see any reason why it shouldn't be approved. I don't know what I'm doing. Jenny Ledger?
Thank you.
You'd have a lot of mad people if you closed that down. Mindy, Taffy, and Thals, right?
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak for this application as described? Thank you. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak against this special exception application number S-1804 by the Pagets as described? Item 7C is an amendment out of Land Management Ordinance. The applicant, City of Perry, requests a text amendment relating to multifamily uses in neighborhood meetings. Mr. Wood?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, this amendment came up because of what we see as significant increases in multifamily development nationwide. That's been going on for a number of years and continues. We felt it appropriate to take a look at our regulations to see if there are areas that we were to address to, for the community. This request was, is developed to require a special exception for all multifamily development anywhere within the city. And we were looking at zoning districts in which multifamily is allowed and where those zoning districts are located throughout the city. We didn't see a way to address which zoning districts are appropriate or not without making wholesale changes to the ordinance. We felt that in looking at multifamily developments on a case-by-case basis would be the more appropriate process for considering in a city period. I did want to point out that this multifamily development do provide needed housing for the community, but they can, in some cases, create issues relating to surrounding uses, provision of city services, and the like. And that's why we felt it was appropriate to take a look at each one individually based on what that specific proposal is, that specific location, in terms of if any, maybe it has excess of power and they might be mitigating. It's intended to evaluate, as I mentioned, the individual properties and their, and their specific locations, you know, looking at, do additional coverage need to be done based on surrounding problems? Can the city provide appropriate services? Do we have adequate water, sewer facilities and that type of thing? Do the orientation of buildings or the location of parking lots have impacts that may be able to be addressed through conditions that council can place on a special exception there, but not otherwise really relevant to the city? So, in doing this, that was the reason to address multifamily on a case-by-case basis. Obviously, we have to continue to comply with fair housing now. We can't deal with anything relating to the residents of communities based on demographics. We also, I was thinking about that this would apply to all multifamily development, whether it's for, for sale condominium facilities. So that's the first point of this application is making all multifamily special exception, or allowed by special exception. The second aspect of this is establishing a neighborhood meeting process in which we would ask, we would encourage applicants of any type of use that has to go through a public hearing process. If they sit down with neighbors and discuss their project, let the neighbors know what's going on, have an opportunity for neighbors to comment, and hopefully if there are any issues, that they are able to work those items out before it comes to a public hearing process. That, as I mentioned, would be encouraged for all applications coming before a public hearing or informal hearing of the planning commission. It would be required as proposed for multifamily developments. And also, it would, it gives the opportunity for the planning commission chairman or council, if it gets to that point, to require the public hearing if there are items that you feel need to be addressed before it comes back to consideration. So those are the two items, the two aspects of this text amendment, the multifamily aspect, and establishment of provision for neighborhood meetings. And I'll be happy to answer your questions.
Any member of council having any questions of Mr. Wood at this time concerning this At this time, is there anyone else present who wishes to speak for the amendment of the Land Management Ordinance as described?
My name is Tara McEnville and my family and I live in Cheshire. So we're apparently on the bull's eye for new development. And currently, you know, we live kind of around the area behind Winslow Apartments. So, actually, we back up to it. So I've seen a little bit of how this interacts. I don't think it was quite what I bargained for when we moved back. I've actually had a couple of people, grown people, look over into my fence as a mom that sets a panic bell over. I've had a couple of kids climb up on the fence. You know, we, there is really no barrier. I mean, there are trees and there's a fence. And granted, when we bought our house, we knew that the apartments were back there. However, the land that's now being developed is up for possible new apartments. You know, if we move out of the City of Perry, we won't move back. I mean, we will move on the outskirts of town. I think we had reasonable expectations to feel like this was a pretty, it's a pretty longstanding neighborhood. You know, I, we know our neighbors, I love the neighborhood, but I have concerns. I mean, obviously, safety is, is a big concern. Traffic is a big concern. We can barely get out of our neighborhood as it is now. You know, and this isn't just about change. I mean, obviously, you know, I don't necessarily like all changes, but you know, we, we invested, we put in a pool this past year and we invested in, in our home, knowing that we likely will not get the money out of it, but that it's a family investment. And even that, at this point, is, it's a little nerve-wracking. You know, I think anything coming in at that capacity right behind a house, and it, this, this property will back up against multiple houses. Not to mention that it's going to take a retaining pond, that the mosquito population back there is terrible. So I'd just like to ask, you know, that that be considered as, as you're thinking about this. I mean, obviously, I understand fair housing laws are in place, this isn't just about an apartment, but the, you know, I feel like that neighborhood's now getting surrounded by apartments. And if I wanted to live in an apartment, I'd be in an apartment. I bought a house to have that extra space, to have my neighbors to know who my neighbors are. And that's just, you know, I, I just hope that that can be considered in zoning and as, as these sales take place. I hope that, you know, right now, it looks like the property that is up for sale, it has not gone through yet. You know, I just, I'm not sure what sort of restrictions could take place, but I, I do want you to at least know from a homeowner's perspective, this, you know, it does impact real people. Obviously, I'm concerned about property value, I'm concerned about my kids, I'm concerned about the, the additional traffic. You know, I have, I have lots of people who will come off and, and kind of use that as a cut through. It, it kind of sends a little panic when you feel like you've, you're in a, in a nice little cozy neighborhood. We're not all safe all the time and I understand that, but those are my concerns. And, and we were not aware of this. I mean, we were never made aware. I, we got wind of it and it sent me on a email frenzy and we were, we came back from vacation and all of the trees were gone on the other side of the neighborhood. So, you know, I think any development, the people who are going to be impacted need to know.
Thank you, ma'am. Would anyone else present like to speak for this application? If anyone present who wishes to speak against the amendment of the Land Management Ordinance as described?
My name is Alex Young and I live in, I live in Walker Farm on 104 St. Paul Court, but I'm on the other side of the highway here in town. And I'm a little concerned with the kind of frauds we're seeing in the state of this amendment that, that we need, basically, it sounds like a second process for apartments or multifamily units coming from the city. I have some research here where multifamily units are a big part of historic restoration and remodelization across the country. One of the towns mentioned here is Roanoke, Virginia, where it was in shambles and they started converting buildings into apartments. The younger generation wants to be within walking distance of a lot of the, the things to do in towns, no matter the size of the town, they don't want to give in their vehicles to them, and they also don't have someone to be home on them. And I think that, I mean, as Mrs. Baker stated, she pointed out instances in her different situation, but kind of kind of in this, that they found out that commercialization is not enough. So we have a lot of neat things downtown here now with the Biggabroom coming to town and the Two Jerks Soda Fountain, and a lot of cool things to be at, but we need to put, you know, be able to put more bodies in the area, spend money and, and kind of help, you know, meet people and spend money. I mean, and the closer they are to it, the more likely they are to go out and participate in the local economy versus jumping in their car. I know on where I'm at, on the other side, that I like to take my kids and my wife and we'll walk to the New Popeyes or to the Hardee's because they're on that side of the highway and we live, you know, two tenths of a mile from there. We like to, we like to walk, we don't mind it in our car to do everything. So I just had, I just have concern, you know, based on what was said, safety, it sounds like, I mean, I'm pretty sure that apartments have to get reviewed and zoned and approved before they come in. And it sounds like we're going to add a whole, a whole other layer to that and it just seems more bureaucratic process than actually, you know, what's already on, on paper. I'm afraid it's going to negatively affect, affect the area and it'd be difficult for us to get more residents into the community that will help revitalize the area. And I think it's very important to attract younger people to the area and I don't think we're going to be able to do that if it's only single-family housing and it's very limited. I think they're going to move places where they can, they can live nearby of what they want to do. So I just, I don't know why this was, I mean, I don't know really who brought this up and made it out for the council and the town. Again, it seems to be counter, counterproductive to what I've been reading. I think it's important to keep in mind that if we want some of these buildings to stay here, that some of these things be present in the community that are going to be, again, considered for apartments or condominiums at some point. And, and I don't think that's a bad thing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else present like to speak against the amendment of the Land Management Ordinance as described?
Along with what that he said as far as the historic buildings, of course, I spoke to you last night and told you that the mission of the Halo Group in Mill, Georgia is to empower people with developmental disabilities and autism through education, employment, and residential choices. The New Perry Hotel is a perfect place to accomplish our mission because it not only saves this historic building, but also provides the perfect location to serve a vulnerable segment of our population who deserve full integration into our community. This amendment will remove our ability to provide residential services or at least require another hoop or two to jump through. This is especially frustrating because in the very beginning, we came to Mr. Wood to ensure that what we wanted to do would be permitted with the current, with the current zoning. Of particular concern is the timing of the amendment request, which came days after we signed the contract to purchase the new hotel, I mean, the New Perry Hotel. That may have just been of an odd coincidence, but it still, it comes as, it crosses a direct threat to what we're trying to accomplish, which begs the question, why wouldn't you be in favor of what our mission is? People with developmental disabilities and autism deserve better in here.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Would anyone else present like to speak against this amendment as described?
Good evening, council members. Good evening, City of Perry. I'll introduce myself, my name is Tina Hall. I currently live in downtown Perry on the corner of Washington and Main Street, right next door to the Bank of Perry ATM. I'm sure you all know it, the little white fence, a lot of traffic, but we do okay. I love my home. I've been following the Halo Group through social media for a few months. I believe their vision for the New Perry Hotel- I believe their vision for the New Perry Hotel is amazing. Why not Perry? Why not downtown Perry for something that can help children with autism and developmental disabilities? There are not services for young adults in this town to move forward, to make friends, to have job opportunities. It's not here. I understand there are obstacles. I just heard one. But I still believe that this is a project that should go through. I've watched the New Perry Hotel sit there. I am a photographer. I've taken pictures of it. It's beautiful. I would love to see it develop into something that is so beautiful and wonderful. I don't know if any of you have children with special needs. On a personal note, I do. My son's name is Dylan. He's diagnosed with autism four days before his fourth birthday. He's 12 years old. He currently lives in the state of California, where I was born and raised with his father because that's where the services are. As a young adult, there's not a place for him here. In California, believe it or not, the services fall at your feet. Some of them you have to fight for, which I did. Today, my child is mainstream and doing well. With that being said, my son Dylan is a little bit of the exception to the rule. He's extremely smart. He can memorize social security numbers, telephone numbers, all sorts of things. There are children and families dealing with a different situation. Their child might be nonverbal. Their child might have problems with anger. Something like the Halo Mission Group, they can work with these children. They can provide for them opportunities that the average person cannot. And the fact that four teachers that have spent their life with these children want to come forward, buy this property, and do this speaks volumes to me. As a parent, I'm 40 years old. When Dylan was born and I was 28, I didn't know what God was going to give me. That's what I got. I spent the greater part of my twenties dealing with a child that was extremely difficult. But the services were there. Worries. One day, my 12-year-old son is going to turn 18. Then what? He becomes his own legal guardian. What happens if something happens to me? What happens if I'm not involved in a community? What happens if I can never move my son here with me? I travel back to California every two months so I can stay involved. His dad and I are not together anymore. Married to someone else. He's lived in Perry since he was two years old. He's worked on the Air Force Base for 18 years, civil service, works on the F-15. He's here in Perry. This is where I am. I want there to be a place for children where they can learn, where they can learn life skills, job opportunities. I want them to be accepted by society. I don't think the average person that has never dealt with a special needs child understands the impact that it has financially, emotionally, spiritually. I've seen it all. I have friends that are breaking at the seams because they don't have help here. Children with autism grow up. They grow up and they deserve the right to services with people that genuinely understand and want to help. I would really love to see the New Perry Hotel bring this in. I think it's good for the community. It sparkles. I like it. I'm right around the corner from it. If I can live next to the Bank of Perry with drive-up cars every day, why can't the New Perry Hotel be turned into this wonderful vision? Thank you.
My name is Kathy Towne. I know there's a lot of people in this room right now. I don't have a child that's disabled. I don't have a child that has autism, but I have heart for those children. I also have a cousin who lives in McKinney, Texas. And I don't know if any of you have seen on the news, national news, local newses, about Hugs Cafe in McKinney, Texas. Ruth Riddle Thompson, and that name Riddle will ring a bell, especially with Mr. Hunt there. Myrtle Riddle lived in this community for years, worked for Watson-Hunt Funeral Home. Ruth is her daughter, so she had ties to this area. She wrote a letter to the city council and the mayor. And the ladies at Halo asked me, being, I'm really not a best, I don't have the things that a lot of the other people here have toward these children, except for the love that I have toward them from working with them as a teacher and a retired teacher now. I just want to read this from Ruth. She says, "I am the founder of Hugs Cafe Incorporated, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization located in McKinney, Texas. Hugs Cafe will be celebrating our three-year anniversary on October 13, 2018. The mission of Hugs is to enhance the lives of adults with special needs through training and employment. Our vision is to see a world where all adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities are included as valued contributing members of society. We opened Hugs Cafe with 23 teammates, adults with special needs, and continue to have the same 23 as staff. We have a restaurant, general manager, kitchen manager, and two part-time mainstream employees. Our cafe is located in historical downtown McKinney." Note the historical downtown part. "This is an area that was dying approximately 20 years ago. It is now a revived area of beautiful, unique shops and restaurants, including Hugs Cafe. Because of the mission of employment for adults with ADD, we have found that we are attracting customers and guests from all over the state of Texas, the United States, and as far away as Ireland and Australia, Austria, excuse me. We have been given a grant from the McKinney Economics Development Corporation to help with improvements because of the enormous amount of tourists who have come specifically to visit and support the mission. Our story has been told by NBC Nightly News with Lester Holt, The Today Show, U.S. News, and World Report, People Magazine, and every local Dallas, Fort Worth TV station. I write this to show my support of the Halo Group and their desire to do something similar with the New Perry Hotel. I grew up in central Georgia and remember wedding receptions and teens being held at this grand hotel. Something such as the plans of the Halo Group would bring back such liveliness to the majestic building. At Hugs Cafe, it is said that one can walk in having a bad day, but no one can lead that way. It is uplifting, to say the least, to see those in the special needs community meeting their full potential. I sit on a disability council with JCPenney headquarters, FedEx headquarters, and Frieda Lay headquarters. The goal of all these organizations is to incorporate adults with special needs into their workforce. I recommend that you highly consider granting the rezoning of the New Perry Hotel so that the Halo Group can not only provide training and employment, but also a living space for some of their individuals involved in their program. We no longer live in a world where someone with special needs is to be tucked away at home with no purpose. These individuals have the same desires as you or I. That desire is to be welcome, to have a community, and a purpose. I beg each of you to examine the plans that the Halo Group presented to you, presents to you with careful consideration. I have each of you in my prayers that you will make the right decision for the future of Perry, the surrounding communities, and the special needs population. If you have any questions about Hugs Cafe Incorporated and how it has enhanced the community of McKinney, Texas, and surrounding areas, please don't hesitate to contact me and I have her phone number if you need it. McKinney mayor and city council members would also be happy to share what Hugs has done for our community. By the way, we will be opening Hugs Greenhouse in September, another entity to employ adults in the ADD population. We have plans for a residential at that location in the near future. Thank you for your attention, blessings, and hugs. Ruth is my first cousin. Her mother and my father were brothers and sisters. This has always been very close to my heart. And every time Ruth would post something, I would always forward it. When I saw Ms. April and Ms. Melanie and them, I jumped on it. I put them in contact with her to hopefully help them guide their way. This needs to be here. I'm a retired teacher. I did a long-term sub in a special ed classroom at our own Perry Middle School. And I'll tell you, I love those children. This is going to help them be successful adults in this community. I have, I have, even after I left that long-term sub position, my husband and I have opened our hearts and home to them to come to our pond, to fish, to learn how to fish. A lot of these children didn't know how to fish with a cane pole and worms and crickets. We need this here in Perry. This is me talking now. I don't have, like I said, I don't have a child with special needs and I thank the Lord that my grandchildren are helping. I do have a great nephew who has Down syndrome. I know that he can be successful when he gets older in this program that these ladies have started. It's going to go. I promise you, it's going to go. Thank you.
Would anyone present who wishes to speak against this application?
I'm not a public speaker, but I wanted to say something to these things with other speakers. I'm Carol Norris. I adopted a Russian orphan when she was 11 months old. And the Russian orphanage, the doctors didn't know if she had ever walked or talked to a special needs adoption. She's sitting here with my daughter Kelsey, the audience with me today because of the special education program in our local school systems. She is now a thriving student in a self-contained special education classroom. She volunteered in the community for over 2,500 community service hours, collecting food for students who are hungry, venture bags for hygiene products for students, for kids in the community who were suddenly placed in foster care and other crisis situations, and a variety of other projects. Last year, she was recognized by the county commission, by Governor Deal, by the Senate, House of Representatives, and also President Trump for being Georgia's top middle school volunteer and being one of the top five, top, excuse me, top 10 youth volunteers in the country. She's somebody who wasn't supposed to amount to anything, wasn't supposed to be able to do anything. And because of the care and guidance and support special education in our system has provided, she is, she is now doing extremely well. But when she leaves school, she's going to need supports. She wants to be a contributing member of our community and do wonderful things for others. But she's not going to be able to do that without me and at some point, I'm not going to be around. And so, efforts like the Halo Group to provide education, training, and support to Kelsey and so many of our other local special education students, not only make a difference in their lives, but can make a difference in the lives of everybody in our community. And I wholeheartedly support what they're doing and I hope they can seriously consider it. Thank you, Felicity.
Thank you, ma'am. Would anyone else present who wishes to speak against this application? Disamend.
Do we have to stand? I really don't want to stand. My name is Debbie Mullis. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
You can do it next. I have an adult, I already have an adult with special needs child. Not my considerate child, but my child. And he goes to Happy Hour to work because there's nowhere in here for him to work. And we were talking about this meeting on Sunday night because I had, we had to go to this meeting and he wanted to know why. And I was explaining because there's some naysayers in our town that don't believe in Halo and they don't really know, they don't understand. And he says it's because they don't have someone that they live with every day like you do. So, I don't know if any of you have anybody that lives in your house with special needs. And I don't know if you have anybody that you know with special needs. But I can promise you, one day, you will. One day, you will. And they grow up to be adults because it's wonderful when they're in school. They have a life. And when they get out of school, they have nothing. And Halo is something. And if you don't allow it, you're going to miss out. And I can promise you, if you don't allow it here in Perry, they'll go to one of our offices eventually. And all our kids will go to one of our offices and you'll miss out on a great thing. So, and I've been living here since 2001. My husband, my late husband had a business right here on Main Street. And New Perry Hotel hasn't been nothing since I've been here in 2001, nothing. Had a restaurant, it closed, and that's what I've seen, pretty much, other than what I have at Tavern. But it's not been a thriving business as long as I've been here. And I think it's a shame. And you have something that, they can make something out of that place. And it's a beautiful place. So, that's really all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Would you, is there anyone else who wishes to speak against this amendment?
Hello, Gary Martin. Been a local businessman in Houston County for over 30 years. And I want to talk to two points, one general and one specific. And for full disclosure, yes, I'm also associated with the Halo Group. But I'd also like to get back to what I think Alex pointed out. And in generally, what I understand is the ordinance or the proposed change to the ordinance is that we're going to add another special stipulation. It's already an arduous process to get projects approved. The project, the process exists. We don't have to add that every one needs a special exception and more hurdles. All that's going to do is discourage development within the Perry area and they will go elsewhere. So, in a general sense, I don't believe it's a smart move. And for the specific sense of Halo, these ladies are doing a great thing. And they're going to have a lot of hurdles anyway. And all this does is add yet another hurdle, which I don't think is necessary for the community or for them. Thank you.
Yeah, Mark Clausen. I don't know if you remember Mars and I, we were in the My City program this last fall. Great program. I know you're going to wonder where I'm going with this, but I just want to remind you that one of the things that you taught us was that Perry is where Georgia comes together. You know, it's the heart of Georgia. And I served my country for 28 years. And then I came here and I said, man, this may be, this may be where I want to live. I grew up in Valdosta. My wife grew up in Albany. I said it right, didn't I? And we decided that maybe this is where we want to participate in our whole piece of freedom. And I think, we don't want to lose sight of the amendment that we're speaking about. And I know there's a lot of talk about the Halo Group and all the amazing things that they want to do for young adults. Debbie Mullis is my neighbor. Why, of course, why wouldn't we? Perry, Georgia, this wonderful council. I know a lot about you folks, spending time with you this last fall. Of course, we would want to give these adults, these adults that have now left high school, every opportunity to have what you and I have had, right? An opportunity for a vocation, to realize her dreams. You can never say no to these kids. And now there's an amendment, just to be blunt. And I can be blunt because I've got 28 years of service to be blunt. It appears to be prejudicial and biased. Let's just call it what it is. And you know, we're past those days, right? Huh? We're past those days. And our country is more polarized than ever. And not Perry, because this is where we come together. And we're the heart of Georgia. So, we want to revitalize our town because that's where we want to come together and be in community. All of us, those with Downs, those with autism, they have dreams. They should have a job. I want to go sit in their restaurant and be served and give them a big tip, right? I want to go sit in their restaurant and be served and give them a big tip, right? So this amendment is bolder dash. It's garbage and it's prejudicial. And you guys can do your job without this amendment. You know it and I know it. And so we're expecting you as councilmen to do what's right. And on Sunday, all you guys are gonna go to church and you're gonna acknowledge to your Lord Jesus Christ that we just prayed to when we started, that we're citizens of the Kingdom of Heaven, right?
Yeah.
So I'm gonna remind you, what does the Lord require of you? Do justice, love mercy, and walk humbly with your God, right?
Yeah.
Till His kingdom comes. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven, for the least of these. Please.[644.25][644.25](applause)
Anyone else like to speak against this amendment? Disamended.
Um, I don't know if our son's needs will line up with what Halo will offer and where he will fall into that or not fall into that. And I don't know if any of you in this room have a child with special needs, but my husband and I have a son. If you count his medical diagnoses and his academic diagnoses, he's got about 12 diagnoses. And I fight every day to help him achieve his dreams because he has goals and dreams that are beyond what I could even imagine. And he wants to achieve those dreams and he can and he will because God's gonna equip him to do what God's called him to do, whatever that is. And whether his needs line up with what the Halo Group is doing or not, I'm not sure. But I am confident that these four women have the, the opportunity to bring something great to Perry, Georgia, where families whose kids hurt and want to achieve, and they have dreams and they have goals and they get up and they fight every day. If they're in school, they fight every day to overcome their disabilities. And if they're grown, they get up and fight every day to be an asset and valued part of this community. And they deserve to be. I never understood special needs until I brought my son home from China. And God has taught me amazing things through the Spirit of Him. And I can't leave here tonight without fighting for all of the kids and adults that deserve this opportunity. They need us to fight for them because they deserve to be fought for. They see the world through eyes that we can't even imagine. They are loving and they're caring and it goes that have other disabilities that need to learn anger management and such, they see, they see the world through different eyes. They are so valuable. They have taught me more about myself than I could ever, ever begin to teach them. And I just think that as a community, we've lived here for 14 years, that we need to stand up and fight for these kids. We could not ask for a greater team of women and the men that rally around them to do what they want and feel called to do in moving forward. What an opportunity. And just like Debbie said, if we don't do this, we're gonna miss the blessing of a lifetime to watch these kids rise up and become everything that they've ever dreamed that they can be because they can and they will. And we want to be a part of a community that fights for those kids because God created them in His image. They are fearfully and wonderfully made. And He has a plan. And what an opportunity and how humbling it is that in this community, we have the opportunity to be a part of that and watch these kids thrive and create another Hugs Cafe or whatever it might be. So I, I don't know what else to say, but I just didn't want to sit here and not say anything. Thank you.[879.32][879.32](applause)
You know, you've given a warmth for the record and this part of the process won't tell your name.
Jenny Loether.
Anyone else? Present wishes to speak against this amendment is described.
My, my name is Lisa Hall. I'm obviously a parent of a child, well, he's my child, more adult. This whole adulthood thing is new to me, obviously. But I'm a parent of a child with special needs. I'm also a special educator. I'm a business owner. I own a pediatric therapy clinic. We see children every day who have special needs and who need support. I just don't understand why this is a question. I mean, I don't understand why it's even debatable. You've got a win-win here. And I think you have more support for the Halo Group and what they want to do for the Halo Group, but also for the city of Perry than you realize. I think, and I guess that's one of my questions too, because I'm not sure of the process. I mean, I want to know how long it is before you make a decision on what you're gonna do because I think you're gonna be bombarded with letters. I can't tell you how many people that I'm friends with who live in your community who are dumbfounded. They don't understand either. This is a great thing for adults with disabilities to have the work training that they need, to learn to live on their own, so they can do that. What better place, you have a beautiful hotel view. Again, it's been sitting, but, sorry, but perfect opportunity to recreate that cafe, to have an office there in the building, to have maybe even rooms that you could rent out as a hotel. I'm not sure what other thing to do with the residential part of it, but just having the cafe itself is tremendous. That's gonna bring people from different places, not just within Georgia, other states to Perry, to your downtown area, the shops. We're going on vacation in October to the New England States. We've mapped out a plan to go to New York where there is a bed and breakfast run strictly by adults with disabilities. We've been to other places strictly because of what they do, their uniqueness. They're gonna bring people here and I really, really want you to consider. Again, I don't understand why it's debatable. I just don't forgive it. Maybe that's something y'all need to share. I don't know if that's something you can do, but I mean, I'd like to know what your concerns are. I mean, all of a sudden, July 17th, 2018, when you've been here how many years, that this is all of a sudden an issue? And after the Halo Group decides to do this? I mean, it's been to me, one thing after the other, one obstacle that they've had to jump after the other. Why? But I understand. That's all I have to say. And how long before you make a decision?
We'll make a decision at our next regular scheduled council.
Which is?
Two weeks.
Oh, wow. No time at all, huh?
Pretty quick.
Pretty quick. Of course. To make a decision on a lifetime and a good thing for the city.
Thank you.
Anyone else present who would like to speak against this amendment?
I would. I emailed all of you today a link to the Halo Group's website. My name is Shane Hall. My wife and I live in downtown Perry, within walking distance from the hotel. And this amendment to, to change the zoning is highly suspect to date. It just, it would make a reasonable person ask questions. I tried to call several of you today, spoke with one of you today, and it just looks, it doesn't look right. It doesn't pass the smell test. And I have no idea why you would want to pass something that would put an amazing opportunity like this in jeopardy. If it's not outright bigoted, it is irresponsible. It's, it's missing an opportunity. And if Perry really is the place where Georgia comes together, surely we can come together on this. Thank you.
And anyone else present who would like to speak against this amendment? Disamended.
My name is Sima Yook and I have three children on the spectrum. And the sweet lady teaches my 13-year-old. And he's the most difficult kid in the class, or in crisis every single day, with the 19-year-old, the 13-year-old, and then my 15-year-old is high functioning, two go to HoCo and one goes to Mossy. And one of the things that eats me up at night, and I know others, special ed parents, is what happens to my kids when I die? Where are you gonna go and who's gonna take care of them? And it's a nightmare. And I don't want to have to move out of Georgia somewhere else to find a responsible group to take care of my kids so that they can just be a part of society and they like to work, they like to help, through a varying, you know, ranges of, of on the spectrum. But this is just, this needs to be here. There's no place for my kids to go. So it's insane to have to have jump through hoops. I'm still having to jump through hoops to get services. I have to have the police come to my house and put handcuffs on my 13-year-old and charge him with assault on me and my husband. Because we're in crisis all the time and this will pass, he's going through puberty. But my kids have to have a place to go. And so I want Halo Group here. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak against this amendment?
I would just like to say thank you for the opportunity to be heard. We didn't anticipate being at this position at this time in the development of our program. We have spent countless hours and months forming what God's laid on our hearts, the burden on our hearts. And it all makes sense to us and we just hope that you can see that it makes sense to you. We have worked with the city, talked to the city, and been completely transparent with them since the beginning in February when we were first making the decisions to make such an extreme decision to purchase a building and to take a leap of faith. We overcome so many obstacles, did so much research, talked to all the right individuals. And in the meantime, we did not anticipate a change in the city and, or the, the requirements to decide, suffice what we would intend to want to do with the building. We've tried to articulate that we are open-minded. We are products of Houston County's exceptional school system where we are trained and we are leaders in the area of special education. What we're missing in our school system is the post-secondary outcomes. And you have some of the most highly qualified special educators and educators in our community and to empower all of us to come together whenever we feel called to not only save a historic building, and we have a pathway to do that, but also to provide a great restaurant in a wonderful downtown area that wants a downtown area to have lots of restaurants and a restaurant development in restaurant district. It makes sense. It has supports, residential living in downtown areas. We're not in, we're hoping that you don't envision this just being like a nursing home. We really hope you can see through some of the, the bigger picture ideas. And if you would take some time to do a little bit more research and reach out and talk and, and enlighten yourselves to, to the forward-moving initiatives of society, you will see that this is not a new idea, it's not a novel idea, but what we know can be done, we will get done. There's no doubt in my mind that we haven't seen 144 direct miracles happen since February in the formation of this organization. They have overcome already obstacles and paved the pathway to make it happen. To throw another hoop into the battle coming before you now with an ordinance, this amendment and all these different things slows down our process when we were really getting into the, the group of things. It is disheartening when you've put so much effort and so much hard work into something that you only see the value of what it's gonna do for your community. And you just want them to be able to seem big enough to see what difference it can make. You would hope that they would not throw in an extra step to the process of developing what we want to develop. We have made ourselves transparent and available. We have held community awareness meetings. I have sent invitations to the city. I have sent invitations and wasn't received to be able to attend, but the information is there. We have Facebook page, we have a website. We hope that you would visit that and just know that we want to make ourselves available for conversation. We have a record and a history of trying to attempt to do just that. We have a history of having communication. We did not anticipate this hurdle. And what this hurdle does in my mind and what I interpret it as is an opportunity to say if there's a special exception for what we intend for our vision that we've been fully disclosing about since the beginning, could, could slow us down to the point of now putting the power of what we want to do on our property into your hands as a decision-making process. And you could deny the whole process. And I don't see why, even if we wanted to just use the motor port and use it for 14 apartments that we could rent out to typical individuals in our community and some special needs people, whether we employ them, train them or not. It's equal opportunity and it's integrated living. We're not trying to make an institution that's gonna ruin a stigma. And if you only see and do the research and, and look and learn and enlighten and just see, you would see the valuable impact that these kind of initiatives can have on our community. Perry is an area and a, a, a community that brings everybody together. We are the crossroads. It's also a certified city of ethics. We are, are wholeheartedly, you're cheerleaders. We are wholeheartedly Perry proud. And we are wholeheartedly committed to ensuring that this project comes to fruition. And we just hope that with the power of the individuals who have taken the time out of their evening despite bad weather, have taken time to come here and show their support for us in this obstacle that could hinder a slowing process, then, then please take the time to hear us and see that if we have to go through another step, that even in the application process, it says in the bottom, that it could take up to a year to make a decision. We could, we could have people living in there in months. There's, there's a way to do it and we just are so honored and we're blessed that we were able to put up a hold on the cell, on the, on our contract, on our closing on the building because it was that important for us to ensure that the community, we had our city government's support, understanding. And you heard enough about Halo last night when we visited you and Ms. Murphy shared our position. You know where we stand, you know where we are, and I just hope that you would really take a lot of time to consider what we're asking and what we really do want and, and how this, this ordinance or this amendment could affect us and delay a wonderful opportunity to progress forward. So as soon as we know that we can have support from our community and they're gonna, we would love to see you wrap around this initiative because it will be a shining star in Perry. Thank you again for your time.[1704.12][1704.12](applause)
For the record, will you please take your nap?
I apologize. Angela Hudy.
Anyone else like to speak against?
I just have a question. I'm sorry, I don't know if this is the right time to ask or not. But again, like I said, this is a fraction of the support that the Halo Group has for what they want to do. I need to know who we make letters out to and where they need to be sent because I think you're gonna be very surprised within the next two weeks at how much support this group has and what they want to do. Where do I get that information?
Mayor and council.
Mayor and council? And where is it sent?
Hill Box 2030, Perry, Georgia.
2030? Okay. If they want to speak with somebody. Because it, to me, from what Angel just said, I don't know how you're gonna make a good decision. You've not, you're not communicating.
Their phone numbers are available. We, we can call them over the next two weeks. That's our jobs to be in touch with our elected officials.
But who do we call? Our elected officials, which is, you know.
There he goes. There they are.
Somebody say they haven't been able to contact, get in touch with anybody for any reason.
We'll get in touch with them. We know where they live.[1788.12][1788.12](laughter)
I'll pay you back. I was driving down the road with my phone ringing. I'm dead.[1793.82][1793.82](laughter)
But seriously, where do? But seriously, where do, is there a specific person we need to call? I mean, what we need?
This is your council.
The City Council, my specific.
Okay.
These six people on each side of Main Hill, but, so these are the people we need to talk to.
Okay.
On the twenty-first.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that an open forum here in this building or do you?
All of our meetings are open to the public. Getting back to the public hearing, is there anyone present who wishes to speak against this amendment?
I do have to say one more thing. And, and I hope we go on my business. I know everybody is looking at this from a business standpoint and you're all worried about how this is gonna go, but I'm sure when Happy Hour opened all those years ago, they worried about the same thing. And they have a city block and it is a thriving business. And it's a crime chain that we can't provide the same thing in here. And so I think you should have faith in our good Lord like all the rest of these people are. Because like I said, one day it's gonna affect you, but it doesn't already. It may not be your children and it may not be your grandchildren. It may be your working people, nobody is exempt.
That's right.
That's right.
That's true.
But if we're gonna ditch all of us, please, you might be smart.
I hope so.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against this amendment?
Let me just mention, I thought one thing and that is that you have, uh, I mean, we're looking at amendment, uh, the legal issues involved here and, and who can be where and that sort of stuff. And we've talked a good bit about this beautiful historic building and preservation of it and how we can finally make something good out of it. I think we can all agree that its days as a conventional hotel are pretty much over. The rooms are too small and just, just everything about it. So it does need to be transformed into something. But my one comment is, don't leave the people out of this conversation. People with special needs. It's not all about legal issues and it's not all about zoning. It's about people for money. Don't leave them out.
Thank you, sir.
Wayne Murphy?
Anyone else?
Well, my name is Janet Barrett and, um, I have a son who has Asperger's. Um, he's in college. Um, he's not a person that would be in Halo. But from the years of fighting to get I D Ps, I'm telling you, you don't want the army of mamas that fight coming after you. I just, because they've been fighting since those kids were born.
That's right.
Anyone else wish to speak against?
Gary Marcus, say one more time. I don't want to say earlier and did, because I said, I think it's apparent of what the Halo Group wants to do makes sense. But another thing for the councilmen to consider is the business of the community. And right now, that facility is owned by Robin Milderman, who's a very astute commercial developer. And he decided he couldn't make a go of it as a business. And if the Halo Group doesn't do something with it, it's never gonna have anything done with it. They will have access to funds and grants, but a business person that wants to go in and make any profitable business would not have access to. So from a business sense, it makes sense as well. Not only the wonderful mission that they're trying to support.
Anyone else? Thank you. This public hearing is now closed. Counsel, at this time, item seven B in the public hearing, you will note that the special exception application number S eighteen oh four for the applicant Catherine and Alex Paget, counsel may make a decision following the hearing. The hearing is now concluded. Is it the pleasure of counsel to have a motion considering this special exception at this time? We wanted to state a motion, please.
To make a motion that we approve the special exception application of S eighteen oh four as recommended by the, uh, some of the commissioners.
As a motion to approve the special exception as described and a second in discussion. Hearing in all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion here, here now, please. Thank you.
Yes.
Counsel, item eight is a review of minutes. Item A, for your consideration, you have been provided the minutes of the July sixteen, two thousand eighteen work session, the July seventeen, two thousand eighteen pre-council meeting, and the July seventeen, two thousand eighteen council meeting. At this time, I want to make a motion that we approve these minutes. Motion and a second. Are there any additions, corrections, changes, or discussion regarding these minutes at this time? Hearing in all is in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. Any extensions?
Yes, thank you.
And the reason?
I would.
Please let the record indicate that if Councilman Jones was abstained or under the absence from the meetings and the motion carries. Thank you. Item nine is old business. Item nine A, an ordinance is for a second reading and adoption. Now, anyone, counsel, this is the second reading of an ordinance to set certain controls for the use of fireworks in the city of Perry, Mr. Gilmore.
Mayor, Mayor and Council, your packet is an ordinance to adjust our code to allow, under certain circumstances allowed by law, control of consumer fireworks. At your last meeting, you had some questions about how that affected our noise ordinance that was addressed on the brief for you at your work session last night. The administration recommends to you all that you adopt. If you adopt this ordinance, it's similar to what Houston County Board of Commissioners said, City of Centerville and City of New York Board of Officers.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Does any member of council have any questions regarding this item, Mr. Gilmore's staff at this time? Hearing none, at this time, I want to make a motion that we adopt the ordinance for, uh, setting certain controls for use of fireworks in the city of Perry as described. There's a motion and a second, and a second in discussion. Hearing in all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion here, here now, please. Thank you. Item ten is any other old business. Ten A is any other old business from the mayor, I have none. Ten B is any other old business from council members. Mr. Biden, Grace? Mr. Jones? Mr. Walker?
No, sir.
Uh-huh.
No.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. King? Thank you. Item ten C is any other old business from the city manager, Mr. Gilmore?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item D is any other old business from the assistant city manager, Mr. Smith?
No, sir.
Thank you. Ten E is any other old business from the city attorney, Mr. Walker?
No.
Thank you. Eleven is new business. Eleven A, a matter that had been referred from the August sixth, two thousand eighteen work session held last evening and the August seventh, two thousand eighteen pre-council meeting that we had at five o'clock today. Item eleven, page one, we've been asked to approve position request adjustments. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, at your work session last night, the administration recommends that you do two things relative to positions. The first one is to shift the events coordinator from a part-time position to a full-time position. And the second is to establish a utility system inspector. Neither one of these positions will cost any money from the general fund or property taxes. They are needed and we recommend to.
Mr. Gilmore, what's the source of funding?
For the events coordinator to be from the hotel motel tax or the utility inspector to be from the water and sewer fund that has stormed the building.
Thank you, sir. Any member of council have any questions? Mr. Gilmore reporting this item. Hearing none, at this time, I want to make a motion that we approve the position request adjustments as described.
Got it.
A motion is there, second? A second, in discussion. Hearing none, if you'd favor, raise your hand. Motion here, here now, please. Thank you. Item eleven D, our ordinance is for the first reading and introduction. Item eleven D one is the first reading of an ordinance for the rezoning of property from R dash three, multifamily residential district of O C, office commercial district. The property is located at fourteen zero one Swift Street, tax map number zero P zero two hundred, zero zero one thousand. Counsel, this is the first reading and introduction, therefore no action is required by ordinance type. Item eleven D two is the first reading of a text amendment relating to multifamily uses and neighborhood meetings. This is, again, the first reading and introduction, therefore no action is required by you at this time. Item eleven C, a resolution for consideration and adoption. Eleven C one is a resolution that will amend the city's surplus equipment disposal process. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, at your last meeting, you had talked about the possibility of amending our surplus equipment disposal process to provide for possible credit from government agencies or partners that are interested in purchasing or obtaining some surplus city equipment. We discussed this resolution in your pre-council meeting and we recommend to.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Does any member of council have any questions? Mr. Gilmore reporting this item. Hearing none, at this time, I want to make a motion that we adopt the resolution amending the city's surplus equipment disposal process as described.
Got it.
Second, there's a motion and a second in discussion. Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion here, here now, please. Item eleven, eleven C two is a resolution amending the city's fee schedule, Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, your packet is a resolution to amend the fee schedule for three purposes. The first one is to establish a food truck permit to go along with your ordinance controlling food trucks. The second is a building permit for a consumption fee, which is a base charge for those contractors where the meter is installed and used for water. And the third is to streamline the residential and non-residential sewer rates. The cost per unit remains the same, it just combines to, to two different groups, residential and non-residential. We recommend to you to adopt.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Does any member of council have any questions? Mr. Gilmore, concerns? Hearing none, at this time, I want to make a motion that we adopt the resolution amending the city's fee schedule, which is what I'm.
Got it.
A motion and a second, in discussion. Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion here, here now, please. Thank you. Item eleven D is an adjustment to the fiscal year two thousand nineteen job classification schedule, Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, in your packet is a recommendation from the administration to address two positions, the police officer, senior police officer, which were inadvertently missed on the original scheduling, recommend to you to adopt.
Mr. Gilmore, does any member of council have any questions regarding this item at this time? Hearing none, at this time, I want to make a motion that we adopt this adjustment to the fiscal year two thousand nineteen job classification schedule as described. There's a motion and a second, in discussion. Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion here, here now, please. Thank you. Item eleven E is a special event adaptation. Eleven E one is a request from the Perry Public Arts Commission for its ninth annual Perry Music Festival to be held September fifteenth, two thousand eighteen from two P M. until midnight. We have discussion on this, Major Phelps, in our pre-council meeting. We had some questions that need to be, uh, and some other issues that need to be resolved prior to us taking action on this particular event. Uh, for some details that need to be worked out or gone and built out. So at this time, I want to make a motion that we table this request. A motion and a second, in discussion. Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion here, here now, please. Thank you. Item twelve is other businesses and supplemental agenda. Twelve A is an appointment that a Perry public facilities authority. Mayor Proctor, Walker?
It's out of my name. Joe Posey, deserve it. I recommend it on that authority, please.
Item thirteen, remember, item? Mr. Biden, Grace? No. Mr. Walker?
No.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Mr. King? Mr. Gilmore?
No, sir.
Mr. Smith?
I do have one item, Mayor. Uh, just a reminder that the city will be hosting our next installment of the Food Truck Friday Series this Friday, downtown Perry, from six to ten. And we'll have live entertainment, fifteen food trucks. Uh, should be a wonderful event as always. Thank you.
And, Mr. Walker?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item fourteen of Department of Health and Staff items. We will start with the city clerk this morning. Department of Finance Administration is King. Department of Community Development is Wood.
I think so.
Um, I already talked. Are you still doing economic development, Mr. Smith?
Sometimes, yes, sir. No, sir.
Thank you. You wear multiple hats, thank you for that. From the Police Department, Major Phelps. Thank you. From Fire and Emergency Services, Hugh Parker.
Nothing to mention.
Thank you very much. Item fifteen are general public items. Is there any member of the general public who wishes to address counsel on any issue at this time? Yes, please state your name.
My name is Gary Matheson. Um, I'm the owner, operator of Chili Street Eats, first food truck, um, here in Perry. Um, I have some questions on the, um, ordinance that you guys have. One, parking on any street. If I wanted to set up at a business or a function that they would be having or something like that, the ordinance says you can't set up on the street. Could take away from them and myself if they wanted to have a food truck there. Number one I have is you can't operate for more than five calendar days at one location. Certain businesses, um, want food trucks and vendors to come to their locations because there are people who have thirty minutes to get lunch. They don't have anywhere to drive to or something like that. So that could hinder them and myself or could help them for safety reasons. They wouldn't have to speed to get to somewhere to get, get there and get back in that thirty-minute time frame. Some of the concerns, um, I have one dish that will be on my menu. Ice cream is a condiment on that. Says if I have to, if I'm serving ice cream, I'm gonna have lettering on all sides of my truck with an address, a name. It's, it's a condiment to the dish. It's not, I'm not selling ice cream, I'm not going around. I understand why you want names and addresses on the side of the ice cream truck. I'm not gonna be going through residential housing selling ice cream. That was something that I wanted the council to look at. Like, this dish that I came up with for the South. I spent twenty years in the military all over the world. Through life-changing events, I ended up in Perry, Georgia about a year ago. In my changing event, I bought a food truck, jumping through all the booths to try and meet. You have to have a business license to get this process done. You have to have this to get that done. Mr. Woods' office, um, you know, I was told that there's been multiple vendors trying to get that license and they quit. I'd be willing to work with the council and Mr. Woods' department to try and help streamline that. You get big cities where you have more than one food truck, it draws a crowd. The ordinance says can't get more than two food trucks on any location at one time unless it's a sponsored event. But as you, you see in these cities where they've got fifteen trucks lined up, it's a magnet. Brings people together to, to taste different collective foods or whatnot. Fusion of foods. Some of the verbiage in here, um, I would like to be able to help revamp it and, uh, maybe change it a little bit, operating hours. If I wanna serve breakfast, I cannot tell, um, I believe it's eight A M. And I got closed by ten K. If I wanna serve breakfast, people are going to work at six o'clock in the morning. Can't serve it in breakfast. So, um, those are some of the things that I would like you guys to consider and I do go on work with, with anybody who, uh, modify their, if, if so be. I know it's a new process for you guys to have a food truck that's here, gonna be operating out of Perry. It's a new process for me, too. So, um, look to be, try to partner with the city and the community any way I can.
Thank you, sir.
And keep working. You please work with us, you know.
Yes, I've, I've already talked to Mr. Matheson and, and we recognize that we're going through this process for the first time on both sides. And I've indicated again that we'll, uh, we'll look at how, on what modifications, if any, need to be considered, um, as we make the work for this.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you. Would anyone else like to address counsel?
I have a question. Or just for clarification, what is the reason?
Oh, just for clarification, what is the reason why nonprofits cannot have a food truck?
I defer to Mr. Wood.
And I'd have to defer to this Myers. I'm not familiar enough with that. They came up in discussions with Mr. Myers the other day about, and I think it has something to do with the Department, but I can certainly give that information if that...
We'll get that information.
Okay, well, look, the Halo Group tried to do one, we're told that cannot, because calling, they were nonprofit, even though we went through the training that the health department requires. But if you can get that, David, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 16 are mayor items. I don't have much, but for them to announce that our next regularly scheduled meeting will be Monday, the 20th of August for a work session at 5:00 in this room. Our next regularly scheduled pre-council and council meeting will be on Tuesday, August the 21st. The council is 5:00 p.m. upstairs in the second compartment room. The council meeting is at 6:00 in this room. All of our meetings are open to the public, so we encourage participation. Please come after the food truck Friday. Last several minutes have happened here. If nothing else, we come to force, I can bring interest in participation to standard hours.